Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This will be a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 7:01 in our council chambers. We'll call this one.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Johnny Giacaminho.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is not here yet. Councilmember Mel Salied is excused. Mayor Proton Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff. Stephen Pocken, city manager. Ashley Coronado, city clerk. Kerry Bagley, finance director. Joel Landers, personnel director. Tim Cox, police chief. Jim Richardson, fire chief. Joestis, city attorney.
Thank you. For the implication tonight, while the moment of reflection, I'll ask you to stand and then we'll say your place of allegiance. Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for my announcements tonight, I kind of said a little bit about an award that was given, two awards have been given to us, were going to be given to us and since had been. So, I just want to say a little bit more and just say how proud I am of everybody that works for the city, but also these two individuals. So, first one, of course, was Benny Scott, and I'm going to let give a little time to actually our city manager to speak to that. He actually was able to attend. I was not able to attend. But Spirit Award from the governor's office is a pretty big thing. And then, of course, the other one was to our city manager, and this is the Gabe Zimmerman Public Service Award. They normally only give out four. This time, they gave out an extra one for a lifetime achievement, but this is for community builder. And they have one for large cities and one for small cities, and the small cities are a hundred thousand or less, which I looked it up on the lead, 70 cities are under a hundred thousand and 20 are above. So, we actually were competing against 70 other cities in the state of Arizona. So, that's a pretty big deal. So, it really was given actually in front of all of his peers. I mean, this is like the lead, only this is for all the city managers and all the county supervisors, county managers. And it was quite moving to me. And so, one of the things he said in his acceptance speech was, "The purpose of what we do is not projects," even though we do a lot of those. "The purpose of what we do is not count money," which we do watch our money, but really what he thinks is, his speech was about ordinary people in Bisbee who do extraordinary things, and said most of his important job as city manager was help them to do so. And isn't that right? I mean, isn't just the public out there, but our employees? I think that we've got a new fire chief, we've got a new police chief, we've got a new public works director. They all come up with him, and you know, he fosters them, tells them, helps them, and we don't have to go outside because we've got so much talent within our own city. So, this award was pretty important, and I'm just really proud that actually I get to be the mayor and have him as my city manager and you all that are here can listen as my employees or our employees. So, did you bring your plaque?
Yes.
Do I have to? I guess I should.
I'll put it on the back of his truck.
It was a really nice plaque, honestly, and it had a tile on it that was designed especially for that particular award. And I want to give a couple of minutes to him, but I think that we can all be proud that what we've accomplished in the last three years under his management and that, you know, we've got a good future ahead of us. So, with that, I just want to say thank you and congratulations. I don't know if anybody else on the council wants to say something before we turn over to you. Yeah, great. Just maybe you can say something about Benny and I know you hate to say about yourself.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I really don't want to say anything about, you did a good job here. I appreciate that very much, and it was certainly unexpected and extremely special to be in Penney. There've been a lot of people through my time working not only as a city manager, but particularly working here, that are a little bit of that, okay? You know, we don't have to think too long to realize that what we do here takes all of us. And so, if I could cut that thing up into little pieces and give it to everyone, I would, but I'm not going to. It'll look a little funny, but that's what it means to me. It means that what we've been doing here works, what we've been doing here is special, and what we're doing here involves all of you. And it's not, I'm not talking just about the city staff. I'm talking about the Saturday market. I'm talking about the people in the community that just do extraordinary things for us. And so, through that, I am very grateful and thank you. I can honestly say this because I wasn't the only Bisbee I in the house at the Arizona Office of Tourism Conference, but Benny Scott's a special guy. And when he got up there and received that award, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. And I kid you not, for the first time in my life, I witnessed a speech by Benny Scott. I hear you giggling back there. You all know him. And, I mean, what a story to, you know, grow up in Bisbee, go to work in the mines right out of high school. You know, mines play out, you get a job as a cop, you retire as a cop, you're elected to the city council. You know, he was my boss when I first came there in '06, and was very gracious and very pleasant to me and Peggy, and that means a lot. So, when we found out that he had been chosen, and he and the other person that were chosen, there's no criteria for that award. It just happens. Somehow it gets to AOT and they pick somebody. The other winner was a lady up in Page, an animal, a woman in Page who started the slot canyon tours in Page. Her son has been running it for years and years, but then when I saw the video, I realized that when Peggy and I went up and took that same tour, that that guy was my tour guy. And so, it's a small world, yet it's a big world, and that's where, you know, you see ordinary people being recognized for doing extraordinary things. And so, I was real happy to have the chance to be there for his award. There were some other folks who might be there too. So, you know, my congratulations and my respect go out to Benny Ed Florence, who was there too. And congratulations on doing what they did.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Call the public. Mr. Larson, do you have number one signed up that you want to speak at? Call the public or?
Item number one.
Which was, what is accounts payable?
No. I thought it was to talk to about Bob Smith and the electrical connections at the Bisbee Comedy Center.
Other new business.
And their new business.
Okay, so the number four.
I think with my eyes, I'm seeing that, and I thought it was a one. Sorry.
That's fine. That's why I checked. I didn't, that would be a first one. Not really first. Unusual, let's say. Okay. So, we'll call you up at that time, and now let's move on to general business. This will be accounts payable. We'll have a motion.
I move that we pay accounts payable and may not do $524,324.34, subject to available or any advance.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second. Do we have questions on any of these? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second, to approve accounts payable, amount of $524,324.34. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose aye. Hearing none, the ayes have it. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have one appointment to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Anybody have any? Then I'll take a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item A.
I'll second that. No motions and a second to approve the consent agenda as listed, item A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the ayes have it. Now, we'll move on to old business. This will be item number three. This is a discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-23-12. This is the rezone parcels number 1021679, 1021680, and 1021681. These are unaddressed parcels adjacent to 1008 West Highway 92, owned by Mr. Todd Conklin of Conklin Electrical. This is our second try at this. I don't know if we need anybody to come up and tell us. I hope we all understand what we're doing here. I'll open up for discussion among council. If anybody has something they would like to discuss. I think what we did is we wanted them to come back, and I think it's pretty obvious now. You can see that it's these parcels and why they, county broke up into three pieces each. I have no idea under one particular number, but that's what we did. And so, now you can see basically everything that he asked for except those two, which would be 10216082 and 10216083, those two small parcels, but all of the homes. So, that would be a bit of a zone there that would allow some latitude to separate this district from residential. Any questions, comments on the motion?
Nothing's changed from the last time, correct?
Well, he was actually asking.
Well, other than?
Yeah, from the motion, yes.
From the weekend time, yes.
From the motion. And now, that head start way that runs through the center and the other one would still be city property, and that's just the way it is right now. So, that's not the fault, so.
Mr. Conklin is here.
I don't believe he's here. Let's see. Call him if you want.
I think the way it's rearranged is workable.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I was just, sure.
Oh, yeah, the mayor addressed it, but I just want to make sure everyone's clear. The map was, we highlighted to show that all the properties that he was seeking to rezone were adjacent to each other minus the city's right of ways that run through those. We wouldn't recommend an abandonment. It's not on for tonight, but for understanding, we wouldn't recommend an abandonment of those right of ways unless all those properties were combined into one lot, because you wouldn't want to run into an issue where you abandon the right of way and then one of the lots that has no access gets sold in the future. You'd want it to be all one contiguous parcel at that point, but we can address that if and when he does come to the city to seek an abandonment and purchase those right of ways.
Still gives him 6.82 acres from what I'd say would determine. That's a pretty big chunk of commercial. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance O-23-12, approving a change of zoning and amendment to the official zoning map to rezone APNs 102-16-079, 102-16-080, and 102-16-081. Unaddressed parcels located adjacent to 1008 West Highway 92, Bisbee, Arizona, more legally described in Exhibit A, owned by Todd Conklin for Conklin Electrical, from manufactured home residential RM to commercial C4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's go for us, and we'll read it.
Sure.
Matter of time. Since it's an ordinance, we'll ask for a vote.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, so move. All right, we're moving on to new business. This will be item four. This will be a discussion of possible action to go into a Board of Appeals for Building Code with the public hearing to render a decision on the appeal filed by Bob Smith, Director of Construction for Larson Baker, retaining the property located at 1101 Knoppel Highway. And so, we'll move forward with our procedure here. I'll give you a moment to speak when the time comes. So, basically, I'll open this up and ask for the appellant to come forward and give us their, I'm sorry.
We'll just have a motion to go into the Board of Appeals.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we go into the Board of Appeals.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, to go into Board of Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose aye. We are in the Board of Appeals, and right now, we will listen to the appellant or any expert on his behalf, come forward, explain what you'd like. You have 10 minutes. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name is Bob Smith. I represent Larson Baker, the developer. We own that property at 1101 South Knoppel Highway. We have a building that used to be the Alco building. It's 22,000 square feet. It's hard to lease a large facilities like that. We did a due diligence, and we were able to establish a well, national company that wanted to come in and take that building. They had a requirement of 1,000 amps for that space. The timeframe to get the electric panel for 1,000 amp service is two years. 600, they said, okay, we can do a 600 amp service. So, to get a 600 amp service, it takes three months with APS because it's over 200 amps. So, we talked with, and then after that three months, then you have to order a 600 amp panel, which is one year. So, we're at almost a year and a half for 600 amps. Working with this tenant, they came back and said, "We will work with you. We have your existing 400 amp service. We will accept 600 amp service." And so, we needed to add a 200 amp service to this 22,000 square foot building. We met with APS. They said, "Yes, they can do this with the size of the transformer. They can do it in-house locally without going to pass a grant, corporate engineering, because it's under, it's 200 and less," and they can do that. So, we went through the process with them, met with them on the site, and I wanted to put the panel on a corner. They said, "No, no, no, it has to be next to the existing panel." So, we have that in there. So, we got all that worked out with APS, hired electrical engineer, drew up the plans. We submitted them, and we got an email with Joe, and I've been working with Joe on several of the projects on there. He was very helpful with, he described it on there. He was reading the code book, which is one structure, one service, but he says there's ways that you can get an appeal, and there's certain criterias that you can get special permission, which I said, "Who gets any special permission?" He says, "The city council." So, one of the provisions that we were thinking about, and I talked with Joe on this, and he thought maybe, maybe not, was I got a 22,000 square foot building with only 400 amps. You can't put much of a business in there with 400 amps. 600 is very light on that. So, we wanted to do the 600 amps based on the one criteria, so a single building or other structure sufficient to be large enough to make two or more services necessary. That's a special permission that we were looking to give out. If this didn't, if we couldn't get this, I'm talking with Joe this morning, this afternoon. He says there's two other ways to get this service. One, you have to split the building, get new addresses, and you can have multiple services on one building, but you've got to have one service for this address, one service for this address, which is the problem. Or, he says, you can put a 200 amp service temporary to get this business open, order up your 600 amp service, get all your parts and pieces, and apply for your applications, get a permit, and then at a later date, a year plus down the road, when it all comes in, do a temporary, either temporary shutdown or build the service and do the crossover or get generators to keep the place open until they do the switch over for the new 600 amp service. It didn't, it's, that's a long, hard process to do, especially when you have a business that's going to be moved in, in business, and telling them, "Hey, look, this week of January of '25, we're going to have to shut you down, or we, or let's get a generator going to be disrupted a little bit." So, first, we would like to request to see if we can get the areas for special permission, like what the code book says, it's a, this is one I was, buy special permission, to put a 200 amp service on there. What the APS does, they've done it on other properties in Casser Brand, they put meter one, same address with meter one, meter two, same address. It only goes to one address, whatever that tenant is. It's not totally unusual on that. However, the letter of law in this code book, one structure, one service, and we're hoping that we can either just get that permanently or do one of the two other options that Joe mentioned that we should be able to do. Either you put a temporary 200 amp service and then come back later on and get the new switch here for the 600 amps, or we'll have to split out a section of that building and get a separate permit, and then we can get a separate service, 200 amp service. That's the preface of the whole thing here. I hope that, I don't know if this board makes that decision. I heard you say there was another board, I didn't know, for appeals, but that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get a good tenant to be in here. They had some criterias, because it was two years down the road when we talked to them, and they said, "No, we're not coming in." So, we're trying to accommodate, and so we kept it from 600 to 800 to 600, 1,000 to 800 to 600, and that's where we're at. And I just need to put another 200 amps to get them in this building, and they would like to move in or be ready to open up by December.
Okay, a couple of quick questions. Do you know why the code says one disconnect for one building?
Yeah.
It's safety reasons. I'm a retired firefighter myself.
Right.
And when you go back there, shut it down, because anytime you enter into a building with hoses and everything else, you want to have that thing dead.
Correct.
So.
That's why, that's why we ended up from the service over here that was existing for this corner over to within 10 feet of the existing. And the only reason I couldn't get it any closer is because there's an existing fire riser, and then the fire alarm panel, then the panels, and so I put it as close as I can get it, and it's less than 10 feet from disconnect to disconnect. And if they're talking with their engineer, if they're labeled proper, more than one disconnect a building, more than one, and then they know that there's two disconnects, and they can see that there are only two disconnects and services that are right at that point, it's not, they have to go down to the corner and see that it's all in eyeshot.
So, just, I'll just ask my questions, and then I'll see any of the other council members. I do explore other possibilities. Now, I come from a construction background, so from my understanding, there's two things you could do. One is you could just get a 600 amp disconnect, okay? And then you break that 600 amp disconnect into 200 watt panels, 200 amp panels. So, you can, and those are readily available. That's one option. Since you're already putting in one, it's just a matter of putting in two more. Or, you could bring down a 480, 480 volts from at 600 amps, and that would be more than enough for you to handle.
I don't think APS has 480 to that site, the whole amount of transformers. I'll explore putting three, well, I don't know if I could get a, I don't think, you've got to have a CT can to get your, to get your 600 amp CT can, and that's our problem. And APS has this list of approved panels that you can get, which is out of Phoenix, and when you call them to get it manufactured, they're not going to tell you the end date. All I know that 600 amps is over 50 weeks.
Yeah.
And 1,000 is even higher.
I mean, you would have, if you go with the 480, you would have to put in some transformers inside, but your actually, your lighting and all of your compressors would run on a much better system.
Oh, I understand. It's more efficient to do 277.
And I checked with my suppliers, and it was out of Salt Lake City, so I don't know what APS does, but the 600 amp disconnect is available as just, just.
I don't have high voltage. I don't have 277, 480 at the pole.
That's what I don't know if you did or not. That's why I was asking if you checked that out. This seemed like the easy solution, but not necessarily.
We've checked it all the way around. That's why we did the pre-meetings with APS, what they can supply, what we couldn't.
So, Safeway and them don't have 480 yet. Everything's running on 220.
220.
All right. Any other questions?
We'll follow you through.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The only concern I had on this was if there is a fire. They need to be able to go to one place, shut it off.
They are at that place. It's literally from here to there for the two disconnects. And this is not an unusual, because the building next to it, it's all one building. It's got multiple services, but it was designed to have suite after suite after suite after suite. So, sometimes you get a suite that's only 1,200 square feet, and that person gets one meter for that. But if they take multiple suites and they need, that's not enough service, they have two meters for that address because it was designed for that building. Where it just happened to be one big building, and we just needed another 200 amps to give it enough power to suffice this new national tenant that wants to come in here versus splitting out, carving out a space, getting another address, which is all part of, you know, through the city on there. Before, just doing a temporary until we do get the, all the electrical services and stuff like that, and then just do the switch over at that point, which is kind of a hard way of doing it, but it is a viable way of doing it.
I've seen switchovers done on bikes at night, too.
Yeah, but when you're taking, got to kill this one and heat up this one, it's a little more difficult.
I agree.
So, why is this Dollar Tree so different from Alco? I mean, Alco.
They need more power for what they, what they're having on there. Alco just had AC units that they're running. This is more of a, how to say it, it's Dollar Tree, and they're going to have freezers and walk-in coolers and recuers and stuff like that. They didn't have enough power for 400. If they could, they would have made it work. But usually, they ask for the. But usually they ask for the wall and then they tell you what they actually can use. 600 amps was the lowest that they could go get by. And we had the 400 amps. And this all has to do with the timeframe of getting them in there. So if there was 1,000 amps, two years, no deal. 600 amps, year and a half, no deal. Well, we said, hey, we can do it locally, we got it all approved, got the cementals. Then it was, okay, we can do this deal. And that's where we're at, that's why we're trying to, trying to get them in this building. The building's been pretty much vacant for 20 years. It's hard to do a big building like that, or at least, yeah, we really still wanna lose this deal over, over this timeframe, over timeframe, basically.
Yep. Uh, I, yeah, I'll go to him and then I'll...
The way it sounds to me, the units gotta be right next to each other, the key label.
Yes, sir.
And notify the fire department of this situation, so if there is a fire there, they are already understanding what's going on there.
And I've had, I've had buildings where the fire department does come out with their crews and, and when they're new buildings, they look for electric service, so they're familiar with the building and where all the electric services are at, versus like when they come out and check their fire hikers.
I would just ask you, Fire Chief, Jim, what, what's your feeling about this?
I, I don't have a problem with it. I think as long as it's properly marked, um, labeled, um, I, I don't see a problem with it.
There, there are gonna be, like I said, it's ones on this wall, ones on this one, and I couldn't get them any closer because of the location of the existing fire riser, or otherwise I'd be would've been here and here, but it's here and about eight feet away.
And there's no way to have one disconnect for both?
No, that's, that's what, that's the whole issue. We couldn't get that big 600 amp service in the timeframe that they need to get in moving.
Yeah, I, I think I'm still okay with it as long as it's properly labeled.
We will label it, and we will label it however you would want us to label it. We'll put big signs in red, you know, two services here and here with, you know, whatever you may need. It's not a problem with labeling, but this gives you a criteria, more than happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, I'd like to go over and take a look at it and be a part of that.
I gave that some photos and stuff that I'm sure you do.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. Um, any other questions? So you're saying that, I mean, implying, you're implying that the Fire Chief needs to look at it before we make a decision?
About the signage.
Just about the signage.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, all right, um, so we're gonna have the, take a seat, and we're gonna have now as a chance for the building inspector or code enforcement person for this, oh, Joe is here. There he is. Hey, Joe. It's not you. Behind the pole. All right. Uh, you got your...
Mayor and council. That, we really were, we really have been blessed when, when Larson Baker came in and thought that they really can manage it. They've been, they've been very good with us and they've been, they've been stellar in their dealings with us. I disagree with this, with this, putting the second one on, just because if somebody gets hurt, what's the life we're looking at? There's some, I, I brought code and everything, but if you could, it's within your, it's within your prerogative to, to deal with it however you wish to do it.
What do you feel about allowing this on a temporary basis with signs, but at some point they need to upgrade it to the force of time?
I really, I really want the business to come in and I want us to get the tax revenue and I want us to, I want them to make money on their business. I, um, I think that'd probably be the best of both worlds.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else, questions from council?
Well, not so much a question. I think we all wanna see the business come in, you know, the more businesses, you know, the better we are. Um, and I do like that store, so, um, but I still think the one disconnect for both is probably the safest. I don't know, just my...
Well, it is the safest, there's no doubt about it. I mean, I know in the middle of the night, when something comes down, you're running in, your mind's so busy about fire going through the roof or coming out the back door, you, time to stop and leave, that's always...
I'm not, I'm not comfortable having that in my name. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I, I don't like that, my ability to...
Any other questions from...
Well, I just say then perhaps the alternative is the temporary, that you can change it over.
What changes over is what, a year?
A year and a half.
A year and a half? That's not really a change over, that's just...
Well, we have a lot of firefighters here tonight. I think we make darn good and sure that y'all know, everyone that for the next year and a half, there is this, it's a situation, but in 10 years from now, that kinda gets lost in the, in the long run, so that's why I would, I would preferably have it upgraded where it should be upgraded to the new switch here when, when possible. That's my personal opinion. But I think we can deal with it and if they know it's a temporary situation, they, they can take appropriate action if something...
I think we could re-tag with APS as a temporary service with one year lifespan on that temporary.
You think you can do what?
I think I can, I can re-tag it with, with Arizona Public Service at the temporary, um, at temporary approval.
So they can get, they can get the line in.
And they, and they will force that issue.
Okay. Um, okay, so we're gonna move on. Um, I'm gonna open the public commentary. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this? Do we have anybody that'd like to speak against this? Do we have any red gum?
Yes.
All right, so there is time for rebuttal, if you wanna rebuttal, and sure, I think, come on and just...
Mr. Mayor, council members, I think I wanna say that either of the two options that you mentioned are gonna be successful with us. We could order the 600 amp, it takes nine months to a year to come in, we'll give you our word that we'll put it in when it comes in. That way we can get this store open by Christmas time, which is important to them. Uh, so that's what we prefer to do. We understand that we'll, we'll put a 600 amp with just one service, so the fire department has what they need.
And the tenants will have all new gear.
Yes.
Uh, do we have any other discussion from council? So, I'll make a motion that I move an order to disappeal BAA 0123 of Bob Smith, Director of Construction of Larson Baker regarding a property located at 101 Nocco Highway, that we will allow a 200 temporary service to be put in place and that will keep us apprised and at least within one and a half years, the new switch gear for 600 will be installed. And that permanent plaques will show that the installed 200 and the existing 400 have separate disconnect circuits and so labeled by a permanent plaques until it gets switched over. That's what you...
I'll second that.
All right. No!
A four per...
Didn't exactly...
Exactly.
I just...
I just take it out, but I didn't take it back to you.
Well, I just feel bad for people doing the, yeah.
That's why we're recording.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to allow temporary 200 amp service to go in at the 1101 Nocco Highway location and within a year and a half, they'll come back if, for some reason there was a longer delay than that, um, putting a new full 600 amp service in. Um, Ropa.
Councilmember Hill?
At the end of what you just said?
Yes.
In a year and a half, we go, what did you say?
They'll, they'll have to, in a year and a half, if they don't have it done in a year and a half, they should come back and talk to us and say, where are we? Because I think a year and a half should be enough to get the 600 amp in there. So I'm getting them a year and a half temporarily.
Up to a year. Up to a year and a half.
All right.
Okay.
I think that's what I said. Okay. So he's called for a vote.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Jocke Manz?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Butch?
Aye. I want you to pass this by him, too. Thank you. Thank you very much. Get us, get him in and let's get Christmas decorations out. Okay.
Just a motion to adjourn...
Oh, motion to adjourn Board...
Board of Appeals and return to the regular meeting.
So much...
Unless you wanna stay on the board.
I made a motion that we adjourn the Board of Appeals and return back to our agenda items.
Second?
A motion, second, to adjourn the Board of Appeals. All those papers, anybody who's saying aye?
Aye.
Those may, very many guys have something. Okay. Give my paperwork back in order and we'll move on. So this will be item number five. This is a discussion only regarding the homeless encampments within city limits, including enforcement issues and potential ways to help reduce or illuminate such encampments in compliance with applicable case law on homelessness or homelessness individuals' constitutional rights. And this was brought on by Jocke, you know, and I will let you take it.
Well, first off, I was asked the other day, what, by a couple of people, what's being done about the homeless because the increasing numbers of Safeway seem to be showing up? And, um, so that's why I asked the question. Um, I went on a ride, a ride, what would you call it?
Ride along.
Thank you. A ride with the shelter, heartache, canned up water. And was, um, pretty much surprised at what they saw in Safeway. Um, they've gone up from six to about 21 plus people now. Um, that's just one of, I think, four encampments that we have in our town. Um, the, the conditions are pretty scary. One of the people who's asking me about it has sent me an appeal from Phoenix, and yes, I know we're not Phoenix, so I think you can hear that, but they have a program that's set up, um, and they've been doing it for a while, as well as Tucson. And one of the things that they're doing is making encampments for the homeless. They even have a, a spreadsheet, what is it, that shows who is, um, who to have contact and how, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, my question, I guess, is, um, other than just the point blank, what are we doing? Are we planning on doing anything because we can't just continue to ignore it? Um, it's going to continue to grow as it is all across the United States. We have many people that are in need of services. The shelter can only house so many, and yes, some of those people refuse to go to the shelter because they don't wanna follow the rules, I get that, but they're still out there and they're still frequenting places that, um, are bothering people. They go in, they go into the, what do you call it, the senior center and leave in the scene and kinda make a mess. They're hanging out at Safeway in, in large numbers. I know Sierra Vista has their voucher program, but that doesn't necessarily work for us because we don't have the store situation that Sierra Vista does, correct me if I'm wrong, we only have Safeway. Sierra Vista has a lot of other places that accept and gave out vouchers for homeless people. They also have bus passes. Um, do we have bus passes available? That's another question I have. Do we even have a way for people to donate if they're gonna help? I guess this is a joke question. Can we set up a, a way for people to donate specifically to the homeless situation? Like, you know, they, they donate to the swimming pool, does that have to be something, um, that's done separate or does it need to be like funneled back to another entity, profit, nonprofit entity?
I would recommend that if we're gonna facilitate or, or help people with information on donations, that those be directed to the specific NGOs and non-government agencies that provide those services for the homeless directly, as opposed to the city.
Okay. Okay. So with that said, then, on our website, um, is it possible that, can I continue to ask questions? Is that okay if I ask a question? Is it possible to, um, make a page where it is addressing homelessness, it's the links as to who to contact? It would be nice to see the city try to work in unison with some of our nonprofit county. Chair Cow is already coming out here doing health checks. They, uh, some people do show up, some people are being treated. One of the ladies that I talked to that was there, she came up with water, um, seven or two, she had run out of blood pressure testing. So we've got people with some major problems that are out there. Um, we have one lady that has mange, literally, her face. The area itself leaks because there's no facilities for them. They are just going into the desert, so is there any way we can find some grants that we can provide, um, porta pots or portable potable water, I guess is the, that we could put out there? And maybe was, I encourage people to donate tents. Um, one of the other suggestions that was made when I was talking to the shelter was, maybe the city could get together with the shelter and they could organize and give the people a timeframe in which they need to clean the mess up out there. And if it's not met at that time, then, you know, the city goes and cleans it, because it is on city property, is it not? Behind Safeway. That's our property, correct?
Right behind, but, but the one that's further out is not, since now.
Okay, so...
I never wish one to let you know.
A one that's a little bit behind, yeah. So anyway, um, and then encouraging those people and then providing tents if we can get them donated, because for one, it's gonna make them more fluid, maybe not so likely to stay here. CGO does mental health, does it not? Does CGO do mental health? That's just a question, so, I don't know. So, you know, maybe we need to try to provide some mental health services because there are a lot of people out there that need it. Uh, work with Catholic Community Services, I think, or Saint Menth of Paul, because they're providing, um, food also, I believe. But try to get some kind of counseling for these people to just find out, you have someplace to go, you have family, and then maybe we can get donations and put them on a bus and send them home, instead of just letting them fester out there. A real big issue out there is, um, now it's, it's gonna be worse, but the rains have hit. It was bad enough when it was hot as heck out there. Um, two people have already passed away out there, I was told. Um, and with the temperatures as bad as they were, it's, I'm surprised somebody else hasn't gotten dehydrated. And now with the rains coming in, you're gonna have a tendency of different kinds of fun things growing. Um, and, you know, we don't know what kind of diseases people are in, have, and being in those cl- cl- quarters and that kind of situation, it can spread very easily. Things like hepatitis, salmonella, necrotizing fasciitis, which is, uh, the plushy bacteria, and those are all in very moist, roving places. Plus, there was evidence of mitten out there, midden, rat midden, which are nests. So, um, hands is not so much an issue down here, but the cell handling can come from that. So these people are living in a very close context to that. Um, and with that, the raspberry fleas and everything else, so. Uh, one of the comments that was made, too, was that the drug sales of people that are obviously going in and coming out, they don't live there. What's being done, or is there anything that can be done about that, just to monitor that? I mean, obviously, if you have people who are driving in and driving out in a short period of time, I don't think that visiting are in-laws. They're probably doing something illicit, that isn't helping the situation anymore. Again, I know a lot of them don't go to the shelter because the shelter provides daily UAs. If they come in high, they're given one chance and then they're monitored. They have to clean up after themselves. So, yeah, I know some of those people don't live there, but they still have the opportunity to eat there and they can, um, take showers there. I know a comment that was made is we're enabling them, called maybe we're enabling them to survive, but again, if we could get some kind of committee or communal working with all the agencies in the city, maybe some of these people have someplace that they could go, if given that opportunity. Because it's not, it's not gonna get any better. You know, a lot of these people have come in because they thought there was work, they thought they were going to, you know, do wait staff and work in the restaurants, and it has fallen through. And now there's nothing, and we all know what it's like to rent a house and it's almost impossible, especially if you're on general. So...
Well, I guess my question, and how would you, how would you like this to be built?
I'd like to, um, see the city try to collectively work with all the agencies. Uh, I mean, we need to start somewhere. You know, have a meeting with everybody that's involved. Like I said, um, the Chair Cow is already coming out, and I don't know the full extent of what they do, I just wanted you to help, maybe just kind of help check us. Um, the shelter goes out there two or three times daily. They take out breakfast, they really take out water in the afternoon.
We actually met.
Oh, oh, hi, thanks. Yeah, so, um, yeah, correct me if I, if I, anytime.
You're doing well.
But, um, they, we need to, we need to do something.
They're always offering the ability for them to come.
Right.
And so it's not, it's their election to stay.
I get that, but then again, how we, have we even offered them the opportunity to go home? How many ti- how many of you sat down and really talked to it? I know they talk to people. I mean, I witnessed it when I was riding around with them. I mean, they know other people. And, yeah, these people have problems, I get it. There's a lot of people out there that have problems. They have addiction. And it's rough, but you just can't turn your back on them. I mean, Phoenix, I know Phoenix is big, but they have a whole network system. They have a whole webpage set up for it, who to contact, how to, you know, how to help. And, I mean, the chain, I wish you would correct it, but it didn't. They have it broken down and I have it saved. Uh, who to contact, if it's in your neighborhood, if it's on your private property, if it's on, you know, the public and all the different, um, entities within the city that are to help. And, I mean, it's, everybody's going to have to work together. We can't, we can't rely on the shelter to do everything. And we can't rely on, um, porta potty to feed everybody. And I, you know, I know people are upset because they're here, I get it. Um, no, they're just going to keep coming because we have those services. No, that's not necessarily true. They're here because they're out of work. They're here because they have no place to live. So if we can give them at least an area that can be managed, that we can do garbage pickup, that we could, you know, clean it up, possibly provide.
One of the problems with that is you, you run into substantial additional liabilities with providing that. And this isn't a circumstance that's unique to, to Bisbee. In fact, at the Arizona City Attorneys Association, um, conference in April, there were multiple sessions with regard to homeless issues and how different cities are trying to address those. I would recommend looking to Mesa more as an example than Phoenix. Uh, Phoenix is constantly being sued by both the ACLU and the property owners.
That was just the one that was given, yeah.
And, and losing those, uh, those cases. So that, you know, they're, they're trying to find that middle ground and, but they are, they, they have such a substantial problem. It, it's, it's difficult. Um, and as you mentioned, it, it is, it's an extremely difficult situation to try to manage and address because of the vast differences between why some people are homeless and why other people are homeless. There are those who are drug addicts who don't want help, but just want to continue to live in that lifestyle. There are those who do want help, there are those who came for jobs that didn't give them, you know. There's so many different ways and there are a number of NGOs that are, you know, specifically focused on, on helping, uh, you know, that's one thing that, you know, I try to recommend. There's ways that the city can, can assist those NGOs without the city taking on that additional responsibility and liability outside of the aspect of, uh, policing and, and requirements there for making sure that those areas are safe. There are a number of restrictions, uh, on what municipalities can and can't do when it comes to enforcement of homeless issues. Most municipalities will have urban camping, um, ordinances that are intended to address some of these issues. And part of that, being able to have those ordinances helps because it requires those individuals to go to those agencies and to go to those resources as opposed to being given or being allowed to stay in an area where they don't have to do what they need to do to get out of that circumstance. And we've had a number of, you know, there's a couple very specific night circuit court cases that address the homeless issue, uh, that require essentially, you know, the police have to look at each circumstance on a case-by-case basis as to if there are available, uh, homeless shelter beds available at a specific time, different things like that. So we, we can get into all that and we can prepare some, you know, additional information and, and some ideas on how to, you know, from, from the city's perspective, uh, you know, help those NGOs and help those individuals that are on the front lines, providing those services and providing that, that help and getting the information out. There's nothing that is prohibitive or restricts the city from providing information to those services if, if that's something that is beneficial.
I, yeah, I think it, I think it first starts out with people sitting down and talking about it. Um, you need to meet with the organizations that are out there as a city and find out what assistance and what's going on and what needs to still happen. I still think we need to have a section on our website, um, like other cities do, you know, homelessness and, you know, how, how do you address it? Where's their resources? What resources are available to you, et cetera, et cetera, um, on our website? And I'm not saying that homeless people have their laptops out there, but, but people might be.
More from people that are trying to help them to work into those NGOs and things like that.
But it needs to be there, that, that information needs to be made available.
And I think it's also important, in addition to the information for the city to, to show what the city's already doing for these circumstances. I think the city's issued in excess of thirty or forty thousand dollars in grant funds to NGOs that are specifically related to homeless, uh, individuals and, you know, the shelter and different things. So, you know, there are things that the city is doing.
We did have a meeting together with the police chief and us to talk about what we could do and he made some suggestions and made a kind of point that there wasn't a lot outside, there's a very trust factor, am I correct out there?
Correct.
If anybody walks in that does, they don't know, then things start to fall apart in a hurry. So, um, you know, I can't walk out there in a suit and tie.
No, absolutely. And, uh, the city's.
Why don't you come up with, we'd like you as part of our discussion for sure.
Thanks.
I appreciate the invite, that was, that was really, that shows me a lot. It showed me, if, if I could, Mayor, I'd like to, I made this handout for all the council members so that you can see what we do. Because we do offer a lot of services and a lot of our community doesn't even know we exist. But we are out there and we, we saw this encampment explode. I know the state of Arizona homelessness rose in 2022 by thirty-four percent. I'm thinking it's coming from California. I don't know, but thirty-four percent, that's, that's, that's pretty significant. It almost passed a law, Senate Bill fourteen thirteen, look it up. Um, it got vetoed, it almost passed.
They did pass it, it got vetoed by the governor.
Right. That law was going to require municipalities to send police, professional, um, behavioral health specialists, and I think there was another requirement, to go out to these encampments and offer them services. It was going to require it. It wasn't going to, you know, it wasn't going to say it's, it's something that you could do if you wanted to. It was going to be a requirement. And it almost passed.
And it could also move them too.
Exactly. And in fact, the state, the state, uh, actually, in the, that Senate bill was going to allow, uh, state law enforcement to, to remove anybody in an encampment that wasn't authorized from state property and was going to give the city the same authority. So what I, so what I'm going to provide to you, this is actually, it's kind of like a fact sheet. Tells you a little bit about our, our organization and, I'll show you. And then what I, what I have here is, it's a tally of, um, all of the clients that have come through our, our organization. And, and it, and it basically lines out, it's not very specific. We have to be, we have to be careful of confidentiality. So their first names only and then on, on our little categories, I just kind of give this synopsis. But if I may, George. So this is our, our fact sheet.
I'll pass it down.
Okay. Yeah, there you go. Um, and it basically, I'm sorry, and it basically gives you an idea of how many have come through already, uh, so far, different individuals. We had a hundred come through, uh, the shelter, we're halfway through the year. So last year, I think we had two hundred and four. So we're, we're on that target, same thing. Um, what we do offer, and I'm just going to go over it really briefly. What we do offer there is we do have a shower program. They can come and shower if they want to. We actually took the shower out to the encampment. That I do over very well because we only had two people who actually came and took a shower. Don't know why. Um, they're very skittish, even with us, they're, they're very skittish. We have developed relationships with the good majority of them, but some of them, now they still don't trust us because they think we belong to the city. Uh, if, if you'll notice on the, the last page, you'll see kind of a breakdown of how most of our, our clients came to us. And you'll see that, uh, social media, and social media is a friend telling another friend, hey, come on down to Bisbee, I'll get you a job and I'll have a place for you to stay. Two weeks later, they're homeless. Twenty percent of them. That's a pretty high percentage. Twenty percent of them. One eviction out of all, all of the clients who have come through this shelter. Only one of them was evicted from their, their place of residence. Domestic violence, we don't allow those who are homeless as a result of domestic violence. That's for the safety of our staff, uh, because that's very volatile. But you do have, you have families who get into major arguments, I'm tired of you, I'm tired of you, and then they leave before it becomes domestically violent. That's a pretty high percentage here, I think it's twenty-eight percent.
How many single, um, parents have children?
We've had as many, uh, this year, we've had, uh, we've had four families, four families. We have a family there now. They are in a situation where their children were removed from them. We've now put them into a transitional house in an effort to reunite them with their kids. And they're doing really, really, really well. Our success rate, and our success rate is determined by how many, how many clients come into our, our facility. Uh, we program them, we do have case management, we monitor them. Every two weeks, they have to come to us, come to the staff, come to the executive director, and they have to say, this is what I've done to get myself into self-sufficiency. And then we determine whether they're really trying or they're not trying. If they're not trying, slap them on the hand, really try hard next time. Uh, but on the third or fourth time, you know, this isn't for you, right? This isn't for you. Uh, our success rate, our success is determined on them getting into self-sufficiency, getting a job, getting, uh, their benefits that they might be entitled to, social security, disability. Uh, I would say ninety-five percent of the clients that come into our facility don't have an ID card, don't have a driver's license, don't have birth certificate, don't have a social security card. And that's one of the things that we do. That is, that is a service that we offer to them. Of course, we feed them. Uh, we provide food to, we provide a hundred and fifty-one thousand meals last year. Our little nonprofit, our little NGO, uh, we try out the community. We went out into the community. We require our clients to go out into the community and give back to this community that has given generously to them. That's just a requirement. So, so with relationship to the, those in the encampment, a lot of them can't handle that. A lot of them can't handle communal living. How many of you ever lived in a dorm, you know, where it's open bay dorm? It's not very fun. So a lot of them can't handle that. You have, you have a wide variety of personalities. And a lot of these personalities are induced by substance abuse. So you go in there, you're trying to get sober, and then somebody comes in there and they're acting a little wacky and that triggers you to act wacky too. So that's what we experienced at the, at the encampment. The solution for the encampment, I think, uh, attorney touched on it. I know, uh, Ms. Jacomeo touched on it. It's got to be a collective. We all have to work together. The city, the NGOs, the nonprofits, we all have to work together. The community, members of the community. If they know who we are and what we can do, then they can make referrals. Instead of taking them behind Safeway, they can make referrals to us. And we'll do everything we can to get them off the streets. We even take them to rehab. We're not a rehab ourselves, but we do take them to rehabs in Tucson.
So currently, um, you are basically offering a wide range of services as opposed to any other entity within Bisbee area, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, but we have some that we work hand-in-hand with. Uh, Healthy Bisbee or Gorpart Feeny, as they're known. Uh, Lou, I don't really, I don't remember his. Absolutely. Wonderful, they're wonderful to work with, they're very cooperative. We work hand-in-hand, we're in the ditch together. And that's what we need from the community members, that's what we need from the city. Food, we get a, a lot of food to a lot of folks. I'd like to see, I'd like to see us do something about the encampment for the benefit of the community and for the benefit of those who are out there camping. That's a, that's a poor way to put it, but it is an encampment, so I guess they are camping.
So I guess my question coming back would be, what do you see the city's role being to, to, to help? It is our property out there. We have certain regulations because we're a city that's a little different than what, what, you know, private nonprofit can do as far as laws and so on, but, and I'm not going to get into legal part or we'll have to go into our executive session to talk about it. If we as a council want to do new ordinances, but as far as a, a non-camping ordinance or something like that, I don't see that as being helpful at all.
I don't. We talked about it and, and one of the things is if you guys say get out, which would, you could probably do, you could probably create an ordinance and say they're not allowed to camp there, and you probably could get rid of the encampment that fast. They call it dozing them over, and that's happened before under different leadership. Um, but what that does is it actually causes those who are camping out behind Safeway to go into freeport land, go into personal property and go into, um, Gorpart or between, between Bisbee Coffee and the highway or underneath the Royale. So it, it just moves one, it moves that problem from one spot to another spot. I think we need to try to find a solution.
I imagine, here's a great article that I was researching this, it's actually from AT Central, but it's Tempe's clearing of homeless camps has ripple effects for Phoenix aid workers.
Exactly.
Tempe's decision to clear large homeless encampments last year has had a ripple effects on neighborhood, neighboring municipalities and nonprofits. So actually, they're, basically Tempe's pushing them into, into Phoenix.
Right, and, and you know.
That hasn't solved anything.
Right, city, city, uh, Sierra Vista has what they call the move-on law. It's, if you're in, you're in an encampment, you're going to be there for forty-eight hours. And then they, they move you, you know, the cap, the cops come out and they say, you got to go, you can't be here anymore. We're fairly certain a lot of those are coming to Bisbee.
Because they're left alone, basically. More, more or less.
I'm not going to answer that one.
Okay.
With all due respect. We're here to help. I, I offered my help to, to the mayor, to the city manager, and I think the chief was there. And whatever we can do to help this community, we love this community. Um, we get, we get that tag that we attract the homeless. But if you look on our little handout sheet that I gave you, our, our little tally, man, I don't know that that's true. I think most of them come here looking for a good place to live. Bisbee is a good place to live, you know? And, and they're looking for that rainbow, that, that, that little bucket or that, you know, the gold at the end of the. And, and they're looking for that rainbow, that, that, that little bucket, or that, you know, the gold at the end of the rainbow, and sometimes it pans out, and a lot of times it doesn't. So what happens? I think they get stuck here in Bisbee, Arizona. They love Bisbee, they love the atmosphere, but then they become homeless.
A lot of those you held out by bringing them in.
Absolutely, so what we do is we have case management, and we, we bring them in, and it takes a while for us to unpeel all their situations. They don't come with a big T-shirt that says, okay, this is what happened to me, this is where I came from. We have to, we have to peel it, and, and the majority times, twenty percent of the time, it's somebody who, you know, was on social media and said, hey, man, I really love Bisbee, and yeah, great, come on down, we'll make sure you get a job, make sure you have somewhere to live. They get there, you know, one thing leads to another, doesn't work out, and they're thrown out into the street, and then they end up with us, so, yeah.
I think I have one question.
Sure.
This was asked, some places, they, I guess, I've seen this, they provide bus passes, so they can like get to the shelter, or they can get to the park. Is that possible in Bisbee with our bus system to give passes to? And would, would that even be useful?
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
Excuse me, we've done free bus passes on a couple of different occasions, I know we've worked with Gore Park Luches, uh, bus passes. I don't know if we're doing that right now, but I was recently asked if we could start that up again, and, and the answer is yes, we can, all we gotta do is work it out again.
We agree to have them at the homeless shelter.
That's what I said, you could have...
Well, the other thing is, uh, you know, we've been also talking about, um, uh, the jail releases that don't get arrived, they walk up the street and they knock on homes in Saginaw, and basically don't have any place to go, and so, um, we're in the process of establishing a bus stop several times a day at the jail site. Those will come also with vouchers.
I have a question on that. Is there any way that some of the other organizations, the county, whatever, can get involved with that? I know they get released intermittently, but maybe knowing they're in there and that they're gonna get released, is there any way that their family can be notified? Or, or is that just too, too much paperwork, right? You know, Joe inmate is getting released on Thursday, you know, is there any way he's, you know, you can contact them, or even a system or a nonprofit, hey, you know, your family member's getting out, is there, can we provide a ride somewhere to him, or whatever?
That would be something that would have to be worked out by the jail, uh, staff, but, uh, that is certainly in the process of putting together this bus stop, that's certainly something that we can bring help with them. Uh, and I don't know what their policies or procedures or legal issues are regarding that, but we can certainly ask them to do that. Right now, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get them into Douglas, Bisbee, or Sierra Vista, because we've got that route. Uh, that goes between the three cities, and although we can't pick them up with the Coche's commuter, we can pick them up in Bisbee bus, and get them up to a Coche's commuter spot, and then they can go from there. And vouchers, I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna come, but I think the county has offered to pay for the vouchers.
I did talk to the sheriff, and they don't always know when they're gonna release, depends on if they come out of court, and then it's about crowding, and, okay, these are, are up for release. Um, they do say, he does say that they try to find somebody, or log them around at Benson or out of, out of Wilcox, and they don't have anybody to take them anywhere. So, this is how we were addressing that, and, and to see if we can get them in a, a place where there's more transportation than what we have, so. I think the, I think free bus passes that, that the jail can give out, that you can have to help people at least get around, so they're not necessarily walking through our neighborhoods, and then maybe, uh, fact sheet that they could get to help.
Right, and, or, or a phone number, and we have tried on many occasions, talking to, looking at the county jail, call us. Now, we can't wait there for an hour and a half, but call us right when you let them out, we will go pick them up, we bring them, give them something to eat, give them a phone, phone, uh, that they can call their family. There are been occasions, we've taken them to Wilcox, we've taken them to Tombstone, we've taken them to Benson. And we can't do that all the time, but that sure would provide some sort of... But the first thing is, is to get on a consistent basis, the county jail to call us or someone, so they're not walking through old Bisbee, through Saginaw, and it happens a lot, it happens a lot.
That's something we can address with them.
Yeah.
Now that we have staff, uh, that, that actually live in Saginaw, they've experienced the knock on the door after dark, looking for, looking for a light, looking for a dollar, and that sort of...
A phone call.
Yeah, make a phone call, so, uh, I mean, we, we met with the jail administrative staff, and we also met with the health department administrator.
Right, right.
In the same meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Stone, yeah, yeah, and we have another connection there with behavioral health, her name's Teresa, I don't know her last name, but she calls us all the time, and she lets us know that somebody's gonna be released, and...
That works.
You know, if we know that they're gonna be released, we will certainly go pick them up.
I don't know on your sheet here, I mean, that would tell, but it looks like most of their, their issues.
Was that...
They don't really come from, how many of these actually came from the jails.
Uh, yeah, I didn't have it, it's on...
I don't, I don't think it was that, I haven't had a chance to study it. Anyway.
Right.
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate, you know, everything you do, and we as a city would like to, you know, meet up again, and, and you just need to tell us. I wish, I mean, I'll be honest, I, I wrote a little thing here for myself, but the thing of it is, is, is if we're gonna make some larger commitment, like if you're gonna, if we're gonna design a place for them, to allow them to camp or whatever, then we have to give them facilities for, for, you know, toiletries and showers and so on and so forth, and it could, we don't have the budget to that, so...
I, I think the key is, like we've discussed, is that we need to work with the NGOs and the nonprofits, and rather than the city take, take that off, there's liability issues and all that.
The other thing we have going against this, of course, is a lot of these aren't on city, even in city limits.
Um, there's only, to my knowledge, there's only like three that are not on city property, the rest of them are on city property.
So one behind library is Doc, they're on ADOT and Freeport. I, I looked it out, though.
Right, 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 no, no, you're, no, you're right, yeah, yeah, that's Department of Transportation, that's, that's a...
A nightmare.
Yeah, it is, but we did, we did, um, bring one to the shelter. So we go to the Gore Park every, every, uh, morning and every afternoon, encouraged them to come, and we finally got one to come. And she was one that was living out in UOT land.
Then there's another encampment that's further more towards the transfer station, but that's where the fires have been, the, we have two fires.
That's the one that's really close to the transfer station, and that's, I believe, I, I, I don't know where the line is, but I believe that's actually personal property. It might be county.
No, it's in the county, it's not in, it's not in the city's problem.
Right, it's not city, it's definitely not city. Yeah.
Hey, um, I'm gonna leave it to you to end up however you want, and...
Well, I just hope that we can get together collectively, um, with many organizations with the city. Um, and I would like to see something put on our website, the list of resources, the list of shelters, so those people that are looking to donate, that they can.
Or links.
Or links.
It goes through...
That's...
Links to ours, we do have one, and I, I listed it on the fact sheet, so... Anything else? We do have transitional housing too, I forgot to mention that, and, and that fact sheet's just a little bit older than, I think when I met with the city manager and mayor and the chief, uh, we were, we were in the process of trying to get a grant for transitional housing. That's, that's really important, continuing care is really, really important, because, um, you can have them at the shelter in communal living, we can monitor them, we can make sure they're good, then you kick them out to the economy, or you kick them out to the community, and they fall right back on their face. Transitional housing allows us to continue to monitor them in a more free environment for another six months, so... And we have ten beds for transitional housing.
I do have...
Anyway, I just thought I'd mention, thank you guys for this on, but is there, anybody questions, any questions?
Hey, Billy.
I just have one last statement, I, I, you know, until something is figured out, I, I would like to see at least a couple quarterpops put out there. And the, you know, on, right on the cusp of, of our land, because, um, it's, it's ugly out there. And, um, I just think we should help put them out there, and if they don't get, you know, properly used, then, then I, you know, I guess we remove them, but, um, maybe look for donations to do that, unless we have it in our emergency pocket. So, they need, there needs to be something out there, so that the people aren't going into the senior center at Safeway, or just not going anywhere. I do have one question, there's a dumpster out there, is that the city's dumpster?
No. Maybe it is, yeah, put it out there for them.
What, what is the schedule for that, do you?
Don't worry, I'll crack it. When it gets to, or what?
They should be looking at it daily.
About my paper. All right. All right, so, we'll move on, this, um, move on to item six, this is a discussion, possible approval of the updated memorandum of understanding between the Bisbee Firefighters Association, Local 2126, and the BMFA, and PFFA, and IAFF, IAFF, and the City of Bisbee, effective July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, good evening again, is that working okay?
It's not really.
It's flashing out and off.
Then I will bring you batteries.
You grab this one, is that... Grab the one off. Oh, there you go.
I thought that sounded kind of... Okay, um, for the last several months, um, city staff and the executive board of the Firefighters Union have been engaged in conversations with regard to updating the memorandum of understanding that exists between the city and the firefighters. Um, the, uh, team for the firefighters consisted of Justin McBeal, Michael Biden, and Ectele Torak, we've all three of you right here. And, uh, raise your hands, guys. And, uh, and, and the committee for the city, um, included Chief Richardson, uh, the HR Director, Joel Anderson, and myself. And now, we've been talking over the last several months, it did take several months to do it, it just takes several months to put together meetings where everybody's available, and, and so, uh, it took a little bit more time than when we got there towards the end. Uh, we started getting vacation season and so forth and so on, it just took a little more time, I think, than what we wanted to, but I think we ended up in the same place, uh, which is, which is good. Uh, you have a copy of the MOU in your packets this evening. I'm gonna go through real quickly and, um, note the changes. I'll just say right at the outset, any date on this thing is a new date, okay? We can get past that real quickly. Um, and, uh, the term of the agreement, of course, our dates also are in Article Four, and so, it'll be effective on July eighteenth, and, uh, remain in effect until June thirtieth, unless amended. In Article Six, uh, there was just a change in a word to provide more consistency, um, and that had to do with paragraph one, the hours of work. That paragraph remains the same, except in the last full line, uh, the word reduced is, um, changed to alternative time period. Article Seven remains the same, Article Eight remains the same, Article Nine remains the same, and then Article Ten, um, remains the same, except for, of course, the effective date. Article Eleven, clothing allowance, uh, currently is seven hundred and fifty dollars. That has been changed to eight hundred and fifty dollars effective, um, with your approval of this agreement. And then Article Twelve, again, the only change is the change of dates, and Article Thirteen remains the same, uh, fourteen and fifteen remain the same. Article Sixteen is new, uh, that does not exist in environmental use, and that has to do with health, wellness, and fire service cancer initiative standards. Uh, in paragraph one, uh, we, we agree that, uh, we should provide membership dues of twenty dollars per month per employee uh, to who utilizes a service to support firefighter health, wellness, and physical fitness. The fire department has already made arrangements with A W O P Gym, uh, for a discounted rate for, uh, for the members, uh, to be able to, um, become members of the gym, and then, um, we're working, we're gonna work out, I believe we're gonna work out a direct building, if I remember correctly, so if the bill comes to the city, that'll, like, everybody having to reimburse for it, I think that's what we're looking at. And, uh, item number two, uh, and I think, and this is more and more important as time goes on, um, the city and the fire department will follow all cancer initiative standards as set forth in the ARS twenty-three nine one point zero nine, to include maintaining both fire stations to current NFA standards, and to mitigate possible cancerous exposure from the apparatus bay to the limited quarters. Uh, as you know, Station Eighty-Two is a two-story building, uh, and the, uh, it's a problem there. It is, is slightly worse if it had been a one-story facility. Uh, and then the last page is the signature page. Now, it doesn't seem like a, a lot of change here, in the actual MOU itself, there's not. But as normally happens in the course of these discussions, um, we do, uh, we do talk about a wide variety of things. One of the things that we talk about every time we talk about an MOU is, uh, what, what we can anticipate in improvements uh, moving forward to both fire stations in order to make them not only safe and, and, and healthy in terms of NFA standards and statutes, but also, uh, to deal with issues of what we have here, uh, which are a couple of AJ buildings. Some of the improvements that we have, 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 have identified that will be done, um, and some of these are already in the process for maybe done. Windows in Station Eighty-Two, uh, I, I don't think they're all replaced yet, but they're, they're getting there. Uh, kitchen upgrade, um, Lieutenant Hauser, or excuse me, Captain, Captain Hauser, um, and the chief and I had a conversation just before this meeting. Kitchen upgrade has been a real odyssey, because, um, the, the kitchen was kind of original to the building, um, and it's been a little bit difficult, not only getting contractors, but getting materials and getting it done right. Uh, and so, we're, we're closing in on the end of that odyssey, and we just talked about, hopefully, what will be the final touches on kitchen, uh, counters, uh, here within the next few weeks. Uh, air conditioning, you know about, uh, because we agreed to, uh, use the ARPA funds, uh, to put air conditioning in both fire stations. Um, I think we're getting close to having that done, anyway. Not completed, but started, and, uh, and of course, uh, our vendor that you approved for doing those air conditioning systems and the library air conditioning system, um, due as I thought was a very competitive price, but couldn't start until monsoon, which is what we hopefully will do sooner, so, those will be coming in, in well before the end of the year. Um, the stairway and the railings on Station Eighty-Two's, uh, first floor to second floor interior space are old, they're wearing out, and they're probably not, um, a proper, I don't know what you call it, rise over run, or, or steeper than they should be, I guess that's the, the way to say it. In the next year, we're gonna be working with Public Works on a way to reconfigure that stairway so that it is safer to use. Florida, of course, uh, it's a matter of replacement in Station Eighty-Two. We are going to, the last two items, which are kind of, I think it's kind of cool, but it's also a big deal for safety. Um, the fire pole has been kind of unusable over the last few years, and, uh, I, I asked the firefighters to shop for a system that would not only work, uh, for them to slide down, uh, when they... uh, when they respond to alarm, but that will be able to seal so that the exhaust fumes from the bay below don't travel up into the second floor where the living space is. Uh, they have identified that device, if you will. And, uh, fairly soon after we get done, uh, with this thing, um, we're going to, uh, we're gonna commence to go and, and get bids for, for that, plus, um, uh, sealing the hundreds of little spaces in between floors, uh, that we can identify and just fill the cracks and so forth, so that exhaust fumes don't travel up into the second floor. And, uh, so, and, and thanks, guys, for coming up with that. Cause I thought fire poles were not safe, but, um, they still exist and the guys still need them, so.
And the Clive show.
Yeah. And I know Mrs. Clive does too, but we're still not in touch. But you keep asking. Um, also, uh, let's go down. The, uh, one of the other things that we talked about that is in draft form that will be completed, uh, along with the MOU, um, is, uh, we have a, uh, this is an existing, um, document. It's called the Training Uniform and Supply Reimbursement Agreement. Uh, that was adopted by council several years ago before I came back for the purpose of setting forth the, um, standards under which we would have, we would be entitled to reimbursement based on certain conditions of the firefighters' supply. That has, um, actually, it doesn't have a lot of changes to it, but, uh, it's, it's, it's changes that went back and forth between the fire department and with us and is essentially agreed to and was going to implement that also, uh, upon approval of the, um, upon approval of the, uh, MOU. Um, I think that's the bulk of what we discussed. Um, one of the, just, just a couple of, of, of other comments, although, uh, these MOUs generally offer a two-year, uh, term, then you go back and do it again. As you can see from the dates on the old agreement, that, that we did not get there. Um, but we haven't quite got there on any element. The first MOU, uh, after the ordinance was passed in, in 2005, was adopted in 2006. And it was probably five or six years after that when we did the second one. Uh, and then all the way to the year 2020 when we did the third one, um, and now 2023 for the fourth one. So we've done it four times, uh, since it was first authorized by council. Um, and although it hasn't quite, it, it's, it, it works from the perspective that, um, if, if there's not an overwhelming need to do it every two years, we, we kind of let it slide, but we, uh, when it's, when it's apparent that it needs to be done, we get the job done. Uh, I'll take some personal satisfaction in having the signature to three out of four of those over the years, uh, with my non-consecutive service to the city having gone through the first two. Now, um, that is all I have, other than the recommended approval, but, um, the office, well, the officers kind of hopes others, um, are here tonight. And, uh, if, uh, and, and I'm just gonna ask President Gus Campillo if he would like to come forward and, and say anything.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just with this whole process, this is, um, this is my first year being the president of the union and I didn't really know what I was, what I was getting into. But, uh, one thing was, uh, the MOU is, is something that we really need to work on. And, you know, thankfully, it was essentially a, a painful process, um, our negotiations went back and forth, and I think we all came to a pretty good agreement. Rather quickly, like, um, Mr. Baca did say came to, uh, to vacation season, so we kind of, we got kind of a, a longer date than we required or wanted, but, um, I just want to say thank you to, you know, city manager, everybody that was able to help out with this. Like I said, it was just, everything was great with it. Didn't have really any help with it. Um, the only thing that I have is if you guys have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions? No, no, sorry. I think it's, uh, important to have this spelled out in writing and in the signatures. I mean, you know, to work it all out. I'm hoping that this new air conditioning system that somehow that will be isolated from the truck room so that you can keep that air recirculated in there and not have stuff going back and forth.
Absolutely. And with that, um, my, um, my father actually works at this company where they have, it's called Blower Door. And they'll hook it up to a door and then see exactly where we're, we're losing air. Yeah, they can, it's actually, and with that, you know, that'll actually help us pinpoint where, you know, where we need to seal up.
Okay, great, yeah. It's, that's important. I saw the fan.
Yeah.
The black fan. Okay. Uh, any other, like, questions, comments?
Yeah, I would just like to express my thanks to Gus and Michael and Ed particularly. Um, uh, getting them all at the same time was always a, a venture.
Yeah.
But we made it happen. And, and you guys were really great to work with, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Just hope we get more of you guys. Some more tires. That's our, that's the big goal. Along with, and there's some more equipment and stuff. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the updated MOU between Bisbee Firefighters Local 2146 and the City of Bisbee effective July 19th, 2023. Ms. Secretary.
I have a motion second to approve the MOU with Bisbee Firefighters Local 2146. Uh, almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name. Very nice. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Alright.
We'll move on to item number seven. This is a discussion of possible approval of parking facility right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Saturday Market, the use of Blower Vista every Saturday from September 11th, 2023 through September 11th, 2024, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. This includes setup and breakdown.
We could get an advantage.
Did you? And I noticed that. We weren't named in the insurance until I talked to her. Well, so, oh, yeah, first. Anyway, everything else? Discussion, anybody? Was what we did before and it's worked out well for you, little, and for us in community?
Uh, well, the, uh, you know, uh, from staff's perspective, it's done extremely well, and, uh, we hope it's even better.
Okay. They're gonna fall in the can, just.
Yeah, yeah.
We can just hold out the toilet paper.
Uh, motion, anybody?
I move to approve the park facility and the right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Saturday Market for the use of Blower Vista every Saturday from September the 11th, 2023 through September 11th, 2024, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. This includes setup and breakdown.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve a park, a parking facility right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Saturday Market. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose name. Very nice. You guys have it. So moved. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
You betcha. And we're on, um, number eight. This will be discussion possible through to enter into long-term partnership between the Bisbee Senior Association with the City of Bisbee and their continuing collaboration with the maintain and improve and redevelop this Bisbee Senior Center and the surrounding two major property located at 300 Collins Road.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as indicated, uh, in your packet, um, uh, the Public Works Director, uh, and myself met with the officers of the, um, Bisbee Senior Association, I don't know, a while back, about a month ago. Um, and, uh, we discussed a variety of, of issues that, uh, not really issues, but, uh, wishes that they would like to undertake. Um, and as you can see from, excuse me, the draft memorandum of understanding that, um, what they're asking for in part is, uh, for the city to act as a fiscal agent for, uh, grants that they are hoping to apply for. Uh, and I think I included some of the things that we would like to do in the packet. Um, and that, uh, um, so they, they, well, let's put it this way. I'm, 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 I'm gonna let them speak for themselves, but I think that they've got some really great ideas for improvements out there. And I don't think I could use near the enthusiasm you're telling what they are, but at least you can.
Come on up.
Well, I wasn't expecting to do that, but I can.
Well, you come to a council meeting.
Well, we, we started out by, uh, applying for a number of brands. One in particular was for the, through the Legacy Foundation. And they made the mistake of asking us to be innovative. And, uh, we decided, we'd like to dream big. Uh, some of the ideas, I mean, right now, one of the things that they're, uh, the board is talking about is that we'd really like to do the best seniors dinner in the home in the United States. And to do that, we'd like to start offering, uh, some fitness programs that have never been available, uh, to seniors in Bisbee. In particular, we'd like to have an aquatic fitness center that not to, not to be in competition with your city pool because it's a tiny little thing. It's about 15 foot wide by about 20 foot long. But it's an endless pool, uh, what they call a swim spa. And it enables you to swim against the current. And we could provide aerobic fitness classes and a whole number of therapeutic situations for our members if they are, that are available for them right now. We'd also like to use the whole entire two acres that we have there. Uh, right now, you were talking earlier about our abors and homeless camp. Uh, we'd like to use our portion of that property for something a lot more fitness oriented for our members than our homeless camp. Uh, we're looking at revitalizing the trail that exists out there. We have an eighth mile trail that nobody but the homeless people use right now. Uh, we'd like to, uh, the first part of our strategic plan is to build, uh, a new map for the two acre parcel that we have and include a variety of fitness activities that we think will help our members defy gravity and defy age and become a much more potent, uh, part of the community. And that's not been done in the past, and we'd like to see that start. And to do that, we had to apply for, uh, federal grants, for state grants, and for tribal grants. And we can't do that on our own. We have to have the City of Bisbee to act as our fiscal aid, more to be able to do that. And so that's, uh, the primary thrust of what our MOU is. We'd just like to get started on building a whole new center that people can be felt of. I know, uh, a lot of people, we, one of the focus groups that we had recently, uh, we, uh, met with about 20 movers and shakers of the community. And, uh, we had mirrors in the room, and we thought that most of them were probably of an age that they should belong to the seniorship. But we found out that almost all of them believed that senior citizens are at least 10 years older than they are. And so we'd like to appeal to that portion of our citizenry and have a lot more active members going. Uh, right now, we aren't able to do that. We've been very proud of what the city's been able to help us with in terms of, uh, we've got an Arizona room that we remodeled. We've got, uh, we're working on getting the kitchen recertified. And we'd like to offer, uh, a lot more healthy items than we do right now. Right now, a lot of what we offer is from Safeway. And God bless them, but, uh, we have a lot of diabetic members that probably don't need to eat that much sugar. And we'd like to be able to offer some healthy alternatives for meals and for lunches and that program as well. But our MOU would enable us to get those studies done so that we can say exactly what we need with the seniors center and get funding for those. And we'd appreciate your help on that.
Sounds great. I'm, I hope you're happy with your new roof now it's starting to rain.
We're thrilled to have a new roof. And we're also thrilled to have the new, uh, Seago rooms.
Yep.
Those additions were really helpful.
Yeah, so we're, I think we're all behind you and, and we're just really hap, at least I'm really happy with, uh, what's been going on out there. And, and I just can't believe you don't have more and more people. But I'm not a senior yet. I'm only 70.
Uh, it'd have to be at least 90 to be a senior.
Whatever's 10 years older than me. Thank you. That was great. I love that. Alright. Um, any questions or comments?
How many members do you have COVID?
130. And that's up from 30, uh, after COVID. So in the last 18 months, we've increased by over 100 members.
And I'm one, so you could, you want to, you're way over.
Oh, geez, not my heart. Alright, um, great. That was, thank you. That was a nice presentation. So, okay, um, anything else? Entertaining motion for item eight?
I move to approve the proposed long-term partnership with the Bisbee Senior Spit Association and their continuing collaboration to maintain, improve, and redevelop Bisbee Senior Center located at 300 Collins Road, Bisbee.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a motion a second to enter into the long-term partnership with the Bisbee Senior Center Association and the City of Bisbee. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name. Very nice. You guys have it. So moved. Um, thank you all. You bet. Sorry, it took so long to hear, but what happens? Alright.
Well, I have an idea to put the seniors center on, up towards the end of the agenda of Lincoln State.
Yeah, but I'm wanting snow.
We love you too.
Alright, item number nine. We'll all, we'll get out of here now. Here. Discussion possible for to enter into an interdual mental agreement with the City of Tombstone and the City of Bisbee to obtain the basic cell bright system to provide forensic tools necessary for digital intelligence extrication for criminal investigation. All of us break into self-acts, right?
Not just, but yeah. So, um, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you. Um, basically what this is, is it's an inter-agency agreement that the Tombstone Marshal's Office is spearheading on behalf of, uh, four different agencies. It includes Tombstone Marshal Office, the Bisbee Police Department, the Bisson Police Department, and the Wilcox Police Department. Uh, the reason for that is, is, uh, cost factored in versus the need. Basically, we all need it. We all use it. But the cost is prohibited for one government to be able to pay for it or one city to be able to pay for it. So we figured if we attacked it from four angles, it would be much better. Um, basically what a cell bright system is, it's a digital intel, intelligence extraction system. Um, it allows us to increase the amount of digital evidence that we get during our investigation, investigations. I'm tired, sorry. And currently, um, we do not have or possess the tools to unlock, extract, analyze any of these devices. Uh, we rely heavily currently, the Bisbee Police Department, I can't think for the other four agencies, but we personally rely heavily, um, for the Douglas PD which has this system and Syracuse PD which has this system, but they don't have the full system. They have a downgraded system. Um, utilizing those systems with those departments, um, our evidence, our cases takes a backseat to their evidence, their cases. Uh, and it gets processed when they have the staff and the time to devote to that. We have, in past cases, lost digital evidence because of that. And we have lost prosecution and conviction because of that. This inter-agency agreement will allow us to avoid that. We have used cell bright before, like I've said. Um, we use it for our criminal enterprise investigations, drugs and narcotic trafficking investigations, human smuggling tra, uh, investigations, child predator and pornography investigations. And we use it in most of our Rico investigations. We u, we've utilized it in a couple of very recent investigations with great success. Um, those investigations resulted in statewide executions of search warrants in the metropolitan Phoenix and Tucson areas, which resulted in arrests and conviction on matches most likely probable. Uh, those individuals had a nexus to our community in the City of Bisbee, and we were able to prove that through cell phone extraction. Um, and those individuals were actually arrested on Bisbee warrants, transported from Phoenix and brought to Bisbee to visit the Ho Chi's County jail. So that's a nutshell on that. Um, what this enables us, enables us What this enables us, enables us to do, it will give us a regionalized center that will be housed at the Tombstone Marshal Office, that will be used for non-immediate extraction or non-immediate needs, but evidentiary and case-based extractions. That's also what we'll have to take laptops, things like that, to get extracted. The system allows us to unlock phones legally via search warrants that we obtain, and it also has the ability to unlock locked phones, encrypted phones, and electronic devices, you name it. In addition to most of the equipment being housed at the Tombstone Marshal's Office, and that being the centralized location for the Celebrite system itself, we also will be able to do in-the-field extractions and immediate extractions through a shared network that we have with specialized devices. I guess that's a good way to put it. This will enable us to unlock up to thirty-five mobile devices and an unlimited number of extractions. So basically, that was means if a locked phone or encrypted phone, we can lock up to thirty-five of them. Without going into too much detail, that's not a big deal because the unlimited unlocks is what we really need, and that's because of police procedure. That's just why I don't want to go into detail on it. And then, like I said, there'll be the endpoint in TMO, and then we'll have the unlocked devices in the field as well. Cost for this is outlined in the agreement, it's very minimal. Overall cost of a five-year agreement through the Celebrite company, but, which I might want to mention, they're the only name in the game. The five-year agreement for the entire system is a ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars. That's what it costs for a single agency to have this system. By dividing it up between our four agencies, Bisbee's cost overall, it's, it's an equal split between us through either equipment or money. The city of Benson is actually providing the fifteen thousand dollar computer for the system. The Tombstone's Marshal Office is initially purchasing the software bundle and the licensing agreements, which is the bigger bulk of the cost. Our first year cost is five thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars, which is for system maintenance and partial software agreement too, if I believe correctly. There is a requirement that each agency pay for their own training of an individual to utilize this system and be trained on how to properly extract and read data. That cost is four thousand dollars, I believe, for the training course, which is extensive, but it's also in my training budget, and I'm not worried about it. The other year two, year three, year four, year five cost, they're there. You'll notice there's a drop in year two, which is good, because that's because we're taking care of the bulk of it in year one. Year three, four, or three, four, and five, there's a slight increase, but that's because we're factoring a five percent increase due to inflation, rising cost of software development or whatever, because there's updates that associate with this. Total five-year cost for the city of Bisbee is twenty-two thousand seven hundred and six dollars and one cents. I'm not worried about it because I believe this can be covered through my RICO and federal asset funds, and I don't believe I'll have to use any city money for it at all. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Yeah, that company's got kind of a lock on things, don't they?
I went into the wrong line, business.
You gotta be a computer. Questions?
None of questions, but when I first saw this, I was reading it online, I thought it said Celebrite, and I thought we were having a big old.
Yeah, you should, yeah, there's a lot of, you should read some of the reports where they try to write it, and then it autocorrects it.
I actually Googled them and brought it up, and there's five different levels. This, this system does, is all.
It's the whole cabang, it's the, it's the premium level, I don't know if it's level one or level five, but it's the top level.
Well, there's five different sections to the, to this whole system.
Yes.
Get down up.
And we're pretty much getting everything, and that's because with an agreement with the other chiefs and through the, talking through the departments, it, it'll serve us better because we can serve ourselves. We don't have to send anything to a lab for analysis and wait months on end and things like that.
So you have three areas, cities that are sharing this, so data that you have to have for Bisbee, do they have access to Tombstone and, and do they have access to the information that you are going to get?
Without trying to bore everybody, there's a ma, a metadata collection, big broad stroke, yes, to answer your question, and it's so we can coordinate investigation activities, which is part of what we're trying to do. Simply because what starts in Douglas goes through Bisbee, goes through Tombstone, goes through Benson, and eventually ends up in Phoenix. And if they get through us, but Tombstone picks them up, I don't know that. Now I get it.
Any other questions? Okay, say you're not, entertain motion for item nine.
I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tombstone, the city of Bisbee to obtain Celebrite, Celebrite system to forensic tools necessary for digital intelligence extraction for criminal investigations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not to celebrate, but Celebrate the system. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a nay. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. See, this would happen at nine o'clock. All right, item number ten, this is discussion of possible approval to purchase of asphalt, Liquid Road.
Thank you, Mayor, and. Apologize in advance, I'm standing in for the Public Works Department tonight, and so with my limited knowledge of, of the product that Matt has recommended here, this is part of our annual pavement maintenance program, and the specific request is to spend four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars buying and applying a product called Liquid Road. Liquid Road is a more flexible material than asphalt. It is, instead of what you normally see in asphalt with an aggregate and petroleum-based binder, you, what you're getting is basically a much smaller particle, almost the size of sand, and also with a similar type of petroleum-based binder. This will be used, not to pave, but it will be used to seal coat and, and crack seal various roads throughout the community. And Matt worked out how many quantities they would need to take care of the areas he wants to hit this year, and that, as the proposal stipulates, the total to do that is four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and that, that leaves in that line item still about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We will be doing, well, the next item is going to be an asphalt project, and so we will continue to do asphalt too, but that will mostly be for other types of uses, and this will be mostly to maintain roads that we currently have.
This is K E and G doing?
Yes.
They're not spreading.
Okay, so for the Liquid Road, it's only four point two seven miles. Over four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is awfully expensive for just four miles. Why can't we use regular asphalt?
Well, I think you'll find that it's, while it is more expensive, the idea, the idea is to, to, this is more for maintenance than for paving. And so they've identified the roads that need to be maintained rather than repaved, and then they're using that for that, they're using the Liquid Road for that as opposed to overlaying it for asphalt.
One thing to consider is the actual Liquid Road is two hundred and forty-three thousand, the rest of it is crack sealing, all the cracks beforehand, and asphalt tack, and cleaning, and, and doing prep, and well, filling in the puddles, basically. So that, there's, the crack seal alone's a hundred and fourteen thousand, so how do I get a new road, just revitalizing the road rather than re, re, a new small?
It's a pretty comprehensive road maintenance package. In the past, we've either done crack sealing or fog sealing or overlays with asphalt, sometimes we scrape it off and start over. In the distant past, we used the county road guard for crack, excuse me, what do you call it, chip sealing the roads, and we feel that, you know, this is going to be a better long-term maintenance solution than just doing that piece, you know, like we've been doing in the past.
I understand what you're saying, but that's four point two seven miles, but we have more roads to be maintained than that? And how often will we have to reuse?
Well, these are the ones that require the maintenance at present time. Every year, Public Works provides what needs to be maintained, what needs to be replaced, and what type of solution that they need to apply to it. We have, I think at last count, I think our total road infrastructure length miles are sixty-five or sixty-six. So, you know, this is a little less than ten percent, which is probably about as much as what you're going to be in the season anyway.
That's what we have money for right now. I, I did want to answer your question, but if you look at the next item to buy asphalt is five and a half million, and that does exactly ten thousand feet. So that's what it costs to do the asphalt, ninety-six hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, the, I mean, the cost of all this stuff skyrocketed last year, as you know, if we were still at two hundred and fifty bucks a ton for asphalt, this would, this would look like a really good deal. I, I think asphalt is back down to about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton or something like that.
You just did the Seago item, you should.
Yeah, I don't remember what the cost is for the Seago project.
So it says, what you could say, Chigateras, Galena, and one, is it both Galenas? Is it all of one?
There's a map right there.
Okay, that's why you couldn't get this thing?
Yeah.
If your map looks like mine, it's not very good.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm very confused. Oh, I said, look better.
This was a cult.
Oh, it's cool, that's in our, I'll, I'll look it up online. That's one of them.
You didn't save me up a party.
Yeah, so, and, and one point eight ninety-four miles, it's seven thousand feet.
Yeah, it doesn't show me, yes, what makes it.
Is K E and G the only one that does this?
Yes. Really only one that has the Liquid Road product.
And so that's why we bought the bit?
That's right.
Stay a contract.
Yeah, that's being purchased under the same cooperative purchasing agreement, which we're not.
Anything else? Okay. Motion for item ten.
I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tombstone.
No, no.
Next one, I like that one.
You just want to celebrate.
We have two systems now, we can celebrate.
All right, here we go.
One more time then.
All right.
Thank you.
I move to approve the purchase of asphalt to exceed four hundred and thirty-three thousand and six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, should be, I guess, liquid asphalt, but just said asphalt. I'll second that. So I have a motion, second, for item ten, which is approve purchase of this Liquid Asphalt to be done by K E and G, not to exceed four hundred and thirty-three thousand six dollars and twenty-five cents. We'll call them back.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember David?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Bush?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Moving on, item eleven is discussion of possible approval of the Public Works to apply an asphalt overlay on roads within the city of Bisbee with an estimated cost of five hundred and one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay, this is the asphalt portion of this year's paving program, of course, this is for the purchase of asphalt to be applied by city crews using our equipment, and as the mayor mentioned in the last item, this will, basically, this is all asphalt overlay, and will overlay a total length of nine thousand six hundred and fifty feet of road, so not quite two miles. And the, and it's, the cost is five hundred and one thousand, that leaves us with a five hundred thousand dollar change balance in the account after we borrow it.
Does this come out of a different account than the one that's only got three hundred thousand?
I'm not sure on his numbers, but I think part of this is probably coming out of turf, and part of it's coming out of the one cent.
Okay. All right, any questions on overlay?
I have a question, though, in general. People have asked before, we used to put like a schedule of what streets are going to be done next, we still do that? We still have that schedule, and then where can they find it?
Well, I haven't posted yet, but I'll post it after you approve this.
Okay. Uh, who else? Motion?
Oh, and Mayor, one more thing.
Yep.
We do try when we do a paving project to tag houses along the thoroughfares that we're working on next, so.
Yeah, if they can't park them on the street.
Well, well, we want them until we're paving, plus if you want each car on the way.
All right, I'll just, I'll move to approve Public Works to apply an asphalt overlay on roads within the city of Bisbee with an estimated cost of five hundred and one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Second?
I'll second.
A motion, a second, to approve an asphalt overlay by the city of Bisbee. End call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember David?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Bush?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Last item in business will be item twelve, which is discussion of possible approval of Uniform Video Service License Agreement with Cable One. Any business at Sparklight?
Thank you, Mayor, this is a continuation of a series of ten-year agreements that we have entered into over a good number of years with Sparklight. I had a conversation I had with Joe earlier today, this used to be a lot more fun than what it is now, because we used to be able to dicker over certain amenities that the city was able to get in terms of, of cash in some cases, access to public access stations and on and on and on. Two things occurred in the last ten years that have changed all that. The first thing that changed all that is that our cable provider doesn't provide much more than the actual cable anymore, and, and doesn't do television programming at all, but you have to combine a streaming service, so. The, and the second thing that changed in the last ten years was that, and Joe can be probably a little more conversant. be probably a little more conversant with that than I am, but the federal law got changed basically. Now everybody gets pretty much the same uniform agreement and it doesn't include any of the perks that we used to be able to dicker over and possibly different amenities. So, we will be on our own when we get the new building built to put our own camera system in and broadcast our own council meetings, something like the past where we had Bill Glade and his movie camera and we got to broadcast it over the public access television stations and didn't have to fool around with all the stuff that Ashley has on her desk right now and has to monitor. So, anyway, it is what it is under today's federal law and so that's what you're, I'm sorry, state law, forgive me, and statute, statute of commons.
Includes at least a five percent franchise agreement amount, right?
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We do, the state statute allows. As Steve said, twenty twenty, it went into effect, I think it was passed in twenty eighteen, but the state legislature deemed it necessary to interfere with all the municipalities in the state and their contracts with cable providers and establish a single, one-size-fits-all uniform video service license agreement. So there really isn't anything the city can do to adjust or change any of the terms. The next item will put it on the consent agenda. Just to comment aside, because we lost all those perks that we used to get and add that up over the last ten years with everything else that the state legislature has removed from the ability for the cities to generate revenue, it's more likely millions of dollars at this point.
We still don't know about rental tax yet. They're still holding. Unbelievable. We're off, we're off. That's off. Yeah, okay. Uh, motion. Who wants to give me the last motion?
I move to approve the uniform video license agreement with Cable One and Sparklight.
I'll second that. And a motion second to approve the uniform video service license agreement with Cable One, do you business with Sparklight? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jose, so moved, the ayes have. Matt, your part?
Okay, three items this evening, sir. First item, pool update. The specifications for the electrical service replacement at the pool have been turned by Public Works and the clerk's office into a request for bids and that bid hit the street last week and bids are due.
The eighth.
Eighth of August.
Yes.
So, I guess probably the second August meeting will have a bid tab to for you to consider. And that's all we have for that this week.
Okay, thank you.
The, oh, update on the petition that was brought forward by West Boulevard residents two weeks ago. Matt Logan and I met with three folks that were identified at the last meeting to serve as an ad hoc committee up at West Boulevard and Compton. We looked at various different suggestions that had been brought up, not only by residents but by our staff and the county staff. Jackie Watkins from Cochise County, who's the chief engineer and the flood plain administrator. She was present to give us advice on the proper use of these devices in conjunction with how water flows. And so, as I mentioned at the last meeting, what we had asked, if we could do is to experiment to some degree on devices that we thought would be effective in that particular neighborhood. And, you know, I parked my car right at the upper interchange and then I walked up to Compton Street. And all the times I've been up West Boulevard, I never realized how steep it was until I walked. And so, and so, I'm only saying that because it does have an impact on drainage and Jackie was very helpful in helping us determine what we would try first. So, we have all agreed to use a device which is generically identified as a speed cushion. Doesn't have that much cushion to it, but it's a speed cushion, that's the name of the device. Which we are going to put at various locations between where the upper interchange is and the city limits. At three locations. And then we're also going to use some torched down material three, three times in both directions to make it abundantly clear that the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. As soon as, well, not as soon as, but Jackie Watkins offered to bring up her counting device and set it up at some point near the city limits so that we could not only count the volume of cars, but if you lay down two tubes, that also gives us an indication of the average speed that people are traveling on the road in both directions. So, I know her, the guy who operates that equipment for her was on vacation last week. I think he's coming back soon and she's going to try and get him up there to lay that device down across West Boulevard as quickly as, as they can do it. And then we'll, we'll get data from that device for whatever the recommended period of time is and then we'll commence with starting the experiment based on, impart from that data. So we got a lot of accomplished in that, oh, forty-five to fifty minute meeting that morning. And, and, you know, we'll try this and, by the way, the devices that we're going to be putting out are intended to be removable or they can be placed permanently. So, if, if, if we get lucky and this is the solution, then we'll just commence to go them down permanently. If we need to do something in addition or differently, then they can be removed and we still have them, we can use them in other locations in town if we want to. So, so they're not throwaway devices, they're technically usable. So we're going to go from there and give it a requisite amount of time. And, and then also kind of along with that, we are currently working with C-Count to solve the issue of is it West Boulevard or is it Tombstone Canyon? And that solution, yeah, well, we all know what it is, we just want to make sure that you have it in the computer right away and that solution will become a long shot. We'll give you more information on that as it becomes available. And when those come in and we put them down, we'll invite the ward with one reps to cover it. I don't know, you can drive the spikes into the street or something.
Golden spikes.
Frank, whatever you like, okay?
I didn't wish he would do that.
It's your word. And then finally, and I think this, with all of the issues that every city in the world is having right now recruiting police and firefighters, I just wanted to announce that we have three recruits that have been hired and the background check has been completed and they are slated to enter the next academy. So, I don't know about you all, but that's, to me, that's a big deal. And I think the chief, that's a big deal. And to the deputy chief, that's a big deal. So, hopefully, we're on the road to getting staff to get into games, so, in the long haul. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Are there?